We're alive.
We're alive, we're ready?
Ready.
Oh, good afternoon to everyone. So like to welcome everyone to our meeting today. Before we get started, as always, it's always fitting to start with a prayer. We have Pastor Mitchell from the New Hope Baptist Church within District One. Pastor Mitchell.
Well, thank you. May we bow before the Lord and act as I'm together, we want to give honor to our heir Mayor Benzon, and also to the beautiful council members who serve so faithfully in our city. God bless you for your work. May we now bow before the Lord and also our Chief of Police, Mike Blazer. And may we bow to the Lord for a moment of silence and do respect of our troops who are fighting abroad and home for our liberty and for us to be able to have an awesome time together this evening. Let's bow in a moment of silence and do respect of our troops.
Think Pastor is muted.
Yeah. Pastor Mitchell is muted.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me please?
Yeah, we hear you now Pastor.
Okay. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we thankful and we're grateful this evening for this time that we share together. We're eternally grateful to you as our Father. Thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, as we just celebrated his death, his burial and resurrection during Easter weekend. We thank for eternal Holy Spirit that lives inside of all of us, leading and guiding us. And Father, do we need the leadership of the Holy Spirit in the times in which we live? I want to thank you for the City Council and the members and those who have been called to service and that they serve the city of Kenner and its residents with honor and dignity and responsibility. We want to thank you for the Honorable Mayor Benzon, his vision and his mission that he set forth for this city for us to accomplish and move forward in a prosperous way. I want to thank you for every council person and our Chief of Police who serves so faithfully in our city. Father, we need you all around this country. There is so much that is at our hearts and that's so heavy on our hearts. And we ask you to lift up the burdens of our hearts and help us pursue that which is pleasing and light. Father, we thank for government. With government, there will be total chaos in our country, in our state, in our city. So we know the role and important role and responsibility that government plays and how this power is in state and country. We want things for men and women who give of themselves to be able to serve so dutifully and committed in their role in government. Thank you for this meeting. We ask for blessings upon it. We ask that you lead and guide the discussion as our council members have come together to take care of city business. We love you and we honor you. Please don't forget us in this time of COVID-19 and the virus and unemployment and debt. We need you so desperately, but we take this time to thank you and ask blessings upon our meeting together as we share in Jesus' name, man.
Thank you very much Pastor. Councilman Hayes, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Councilman. Now, Court?
Yes, sir. You have a quorum. Is there any resolutions, motions or other items from the floor? Seeing none on the consent agenda, item one, approval of minutes. The regular council meeting of March 26, 2021. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number 2228-21. The Kenner Central Lions will hold a public gathering on April 16, 2021, May 21, 2021, June 18, 2021, July 16, 2021, August 20, 2021, September 17, 2021, October 15, 2021, from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM for the purpose of cruise night at Lake Town in Lake Town, Kent, Louisiana. Item four is correspondence reports from the mayor, C O, Department. Item four A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor Zahn, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you Councilman, I appreciate it. Over this past week, we did two code sweeps. One was in District Five with the help of Councilman Brennan's office, 100, 300 blocks of Georgetown and Holy Cross in District Five. We reported a total of 41 violations. Warning violations were 26, court summons was one. We then skipped over, that was March 31st, I apologize, April 7th, we skipped over to District Two with the help of Councilman Segura's office, 1,900 block, 2,200 blocks of Roosevelt in Kentucky. 28 violation, totally 28 violations, 16 warning violations and two court summonings. So I appreciate the help of James Mohammed, Molly McGinnis, with all the men and ladies of the Kenton Code Enforcement Department. They continue to make sure that we are sweeping these neighborhoods that need, that we get complaints on or that they see on their own. So everyone work together along with the council offices, I appreciate that. Mayor comments won't be too long tonight, except we do have some things to go over on returning to a lot of council meetings. Before we talk about that though, I want to remind the public that we have three village renewals, and I'll stress that, three village renewals that are coming up. Early voting, April 24th, early voting starts this Saturday, lasts for a week. So please remember to go out and vote. Those renewals are coming up on April 24th. So we do have a lot that we are putting out on the public server. Chris Marchinata has done a great job with her Kenton media team, making sure that message gets out there. I think we've had a few meetings. One broad was all open to the public and one or two with some civic associations. I know we plan to do a few more during the course of the next two or three weeks. I'd already planned on, and you did receive a report this afternoon, I'd already planned on talking about returning to live council meetings like I've done for the last two meetings, which tonight we make the third, and I know there's a resolution up on the agenda. If we discuss it again later on, hopefully all your questions are answered. But we discuss it again, we'll discuss it four times, twice tonight, two times in the past, two last council meetings. So I've been very clear with the public and with you guys in personal conversations, one-on-one, and also these live council meetings, Zoom council meetings, talking about our live council meeting return. We have made it clear, and I don't think I've started. I've made it clear that we absolutely were looking at May after Easter to make sure there's no peak and we're pretty sure there's not going to be a peak because I think a lot of people are being vaccinated. Sometime in May, no live in June. I've been clear about that. I've been very, very straightforward with you all, one-on-one or at these Zoom meetings. We have a report, there's a few things that play a factor in returning to the council chambers. I've also been very clear about returning to the Punch Train Center to do it. There's a few reasons. There's the Governor's Order, which Doug Dope's going to talk about. Adam and Deborah are going to talk about if you return to the council chambers, there's an issue with environmental reasons. So we have safety and we have safety. We have safety under the Governor's Orders, not allowing all the public in, which I'll never do. I'll never not let all the public in. Then we also have the safety reasons on the environmental. And then we have some safety reasons that fall under the Fire Chief and also Chad Pittfield will talk about it too. So the mayor's comments are going to turn into a little bit lengthy. Hopefully this will speed up the resolution that we, you know, we get to that later on, that all your questions, all your concerns will be answered for the third time right now. So I'd like to turn it over to Doug Dope because I think first and foremost is not returning to the council chambers besides the safety environmental reasons is I don't want to limit the public in the building. And while we're under those orders today, unless things change, that's limiting the public. There's an environmental thing that comes after that and you'll have all this tonight. Doug, if I could turn it over to you, if Deborah, if you want to take it, it all depends if it's the MC. Go straight to Doug?
Yeah, go straight to Doug, that's fine.
And you go back to me at the end if you answer any questions and then we'll go from there. But I appreciate y'all's cooperation, your input on this. It's very important that we all work together and make sure that we understand where the administration's coming from with this. Doug?
Thank you Mayor. Council members, the city of Kent continues to comply with the numerous guidelines issued by federal and state agencies designed to slow the spread of COVID-19 and protect residents and employees utilizing municipal facilities. This includes healthcare guidance issued by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or CDC, and Louisiana Department of Health. Our facility use and employee reoccupation efforts are consistent with what the state's top health agency currently mandates for its own employees. On March 23rd, 2021, the LDH Phase Three Plan was issued and it continues to require limited occupancy within state facilities and Zoom meetings whenever possible. We also comply with guidelines issued by the Department of Homeland Security, Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, or CISA. These guidelines were last updated December 16, 2020, and those guidelines are still in place. It suggests all government organizations continue to utilize remote capabilities whenever possible and find alternatives to in-person meetings. Finally, we also comply with Governor Edwards' resilient Louisiana Phase Three order, which was last updated on March 31st, 2021, and extends through April 28th. The Governor's Order sets out capacity limits for inside and outside spaces and events, outlines social distancing guidance, continues a statewide masking mandate and requires all businesses and government organizations to comply with Louisiana State Fire Marshal Guidelines. Those guidelines offer detailed instructions for facilities such as ours. Three sets of guidelines generally address planned events similar to those contemplated for council meetings. Business operations, conference facilities and organizations hosting events where indoor space, interior space is utilized. Some of the requirements are limits on interior capacity to 50% or 30 square foot per occupant, whichever is less. This includes staff and attendees. Social distancing of six feet between persons not of the same household, 50% reduction in fixed seating, closure of all lobbies and waiting areas. All participants must remain seated during the event. There are aisle direction and occupant movement restrictions required. There is no physical contact allowed between staff and participants. No eating or drinking is allowed. Masking requirements remain in place. And all these guidelines call for close monitoring and strict compliance throughout any type of meeting. It must be remembered that Phase Three is not an unrestricted reopening of all businesses or government facilities. Gating criteria, including the prevalence of COVID in the community, testing capacity and hospitalization rates continue to be analyzed to determine whether restrictions should remain in place. While low testing positivity rates and vaccination availability is certainly encouraging, we continue to participate in a purposely designed phased reopening process. You'll recall that in late November last year, when the state rolled back to a modified Phase Two due to increased spread of COVID-19, based on information provided by the federal and state health agencies and emergency management agencies, the city administration assessed and shared with the council that would probably be April or May before vaccines were readily available to the general public. And we suggested that at that point, we would be able to better assess the timing of resumption of additional municipal activities, including return to the council chambers or some other venue. That initial assessment and timing appears to be mostly on track. Barring any additional wave, we again assess that we should be able to consider resumption of some additional in-person activities by May, by mid-May or early June. Given the current conditions, we assess that some occupancy limitations will likely continue to to be in place at least through the second quarter of 2021. The administration continually assesses local conditions, reviews current guidance and inspect city facilities to determine what can be reopened safely, how much capacity we have and resources do we have and when and what to, to what extent we can reopen. Certainly, we must consider the size, physical limitations and environmental conditions present in any particular facility utilized before we can make a decision to reopen. And we of course must remain flexible and will need to pivot, we may need to pivot in order to adequately address any unforeseen changes and circumstances. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that may come up regarding this issue.
Thank you Doug. So as, as you can see, we're kind of back where we were when we last reported on this. Some of the council members met with me and Mark in the council chambers. We used a dog leash to measure six feet and we were showing as best we could the restrictions associated with the limitations. Those limitations are still in play. We will not be able, assuming the building were in perfect condition today, we would not be able to get more than five or six members of the public in the building because of the spacing restrictions that are still in effect, both square footage and, and distance. But the building's not in perfect shape. We had this conversation, I think, a couple of meetings ago. We had serious damage to building A. We had a roof failure. There was damage that occurred from the roof failure before it was recognized. The roof has been patched, but the damage on the inside is largely moisture, which is no surprise here in Louisiana. It's largely rain damage. We, Adam Campo has been in charge of remediation efforts both there and at some of our other buildings that have sustained this sort of damage. He's working in conjunction with Mark and Chad and, and others. So I want to turn it over to Adam at this point, just to talk about the process we've used. Now that the roof is patched, roof is patched, water's not coming in. Now we're in the remediation process. I'd like to pitch it to him and then Eloise if necessary about where we are in the remediation process.
Hi, Council. So as Deborah said, we had a, we had a pretty massive roof leak. We had some water damage to the building and we sent, we contracted with Eloise Environmental, sent them through the building for a round of initial testing and they tested for elevated levels of essentially what we call black mold. After that, we started some remediation efforts with a plan basically to test, remediate, test, remediate and test until we got to, you know, industry standards of safe levels to have human inhabitants in the building with those kind of toxins. Where we're at right now is we got, we actually received the last round of, the last round of testing, not that we're going to do, but the last round of testing that we've received was yesterday roughly around 1:30 and we're still at an elevated level. So we are in remediation again, where we're essentially what that is, is gutting. We have some additional concerns with that gutting about the movement of that mold that we share with Eloise as well. You know, disturbing that mold that can actually particularize it into the air, into the HVAC systems and stuff like that and spread it around the building. At this time, we've shut down the building for card access in the city so that no one has access to the building and those remediation efforts are continuing through Chad Pittfield. I have Eloise here tonight. If we have any questions at the end of this, I'll be happy to answer them or Eloise will be happy to answer the questions that I'm unable to answer. You're muted Deborah.
Thanks Adam. I'd like to see if I could get through everyone who's got a piece of this and then if we have any questions, we can bring them up. All right, so the, the major damage to the building is in the front half, the side that's on Williams Boulevard. It's, it's, it's very wide, but basically the building is being gutted from the hallway back to the front wall. You're going to have a massive, basic giant open area. It's not completely done yet. One thought was, well, could we figure, even if we were, if we were willing to have a council meeting with only five members of the public present, could we just come in the back door and just that, that would, you know, is that possible? One of the challenges there, besides the aerosolized mold and the need to upgrade the HVAC system, is that because of the location of the remediation, that would leave us basically one non-ADA access in and out of the building. So we talked to Terrence Morris, the Fire Chief, about that and I would just like him to weigh in on. Is it, assuming we were able to, assuming we were able to access it in that capacity and get beyond the ADA issues, is it, is it advisable by you that we, that we have a meeting in that, in that configuration with the one door in and out?
Thank you and good evening, Council. Currently, NFPA 101 talks about life safety. In every place of assembly, which is what the council chambers is, require two exits for life safety. And an exit is considered three components and currently we don't have two exits at the council chambers right now. But exit pathways need to be clear to the exit, the exit itself and through the exit. The problem is with one of those exits being blocked off, we would not be in compliance, nor would I be comfortable with bringing the public into that area because there are many instances throughout history where one exit from a place of assembly has caused a significant loss of life. Not intentional, but it is, that's the, the facts of the matter that one exit is not a safe condition to have members of the public assembling then. So unless we come up with some other way, I'm not comfortable with opening up with just one exit for the general public.
Deborah, I think it goes back to Chad now. You're muted Deborah. Deborah, you're muted.
I apologize. All right, so just to, to talk about, once we're in the remediation stage right now, once remediation is done, then we test, then we, we reconstruct. The Linfield Hunter Junius has been contacted. They will be coming once it's safe to enter the building to look at the open space before we just build it back the way it is. In case you've never seen it, that building is really a sort of a mid-century modern architectural masterpiece within which we then put a bunch of dropped acoustical ceilings and you can't tell. Now that we had to rip all the ceilings out, it's really some beautiful high ceilings, lots of light. So before we just cover that back up the way it was, we're going to ask if there's a way for the same amount of money to build it back better. So that's the ultimate goal, is to get ourselves back into that, that area. So right now, we are, we are in the middle of remediation. I think if I could call upon Mark just to talk about where we are. I know he can't give us a deadline in terms of when we'll be done because he has to finish what he's doing. Didn't pitch it to Eloise, but if he could just tell us where we are, what are you doing, what's going on? Because I see the, you know, I see the dumpster out front, what's going on over there in that building?
Hello, hello Councilman. And as Adam was telling you, we went in the process of pulling all the stuff out that we thought was damaged and wet until we got the report yesterday and we were told to halt all remediation process at the time. So we were doing a pretty good job until we got the report yesterday, moving pretty quick on it. Like I said, the roof is done on the outside. It's just a repair on the inside that we're still working on. We got a little bit left to do. We will be finished with that shortly once we get the all clear and the safety protocols in place to remove all of it.
All right, so I hope that that helps everyone to figure out where we are. Chad, is there anything you have to add or anyone else in this group wants to add before questions?
Yeah, I mean, look, I'll just add, I know Mark alluded to it and Adam said it as well that, you know, I shut the operation down. I absolutely did once we saw the report yesterday. I have a duty and obligation in my position to make sure that our workers and our contractors that are in that building are safe and can properly return back home to their families. I've had an extensive career previous to this where I almost, where I had the same duties and obligations as well. So it's, it's nothing new. Once I saw these levels in these reports, I immediately became concerned. I have extensive background in biohazard situations and hazmat situations and I feel this is some, this is similar to what we're in right now. We need to step back. We need to look, we need to consult with professionals. We need to do some research to make sure that our people that are going in there, whether it's our employees or our contractors, that they're properly, they have proper PPE, personal protective equipment to handle this type of job. At this time, they don't have it. That's why I shut it down yesterday. Ms. Foshing and the mayor took my recommendation with my background and my, my recommendations on why and what we need to do. So we're going to look at this, make sure that our people are properly protected so we can ensure that after those working hours that they're safe to return back home to their families.
Thank you Chad. Everyone in the city, every council person, every, everyone who has been within earshot the whole time we've been talking about this has been told, unless you're involved with remediation, do not enter that building. If you wish to enter that building, you go in with a respirator and with an escort. We are aware now of a couple of folks who got in anyway. They are going to be contacted probably by HR and with the support of the occupational medicine physician advised what baseline testing needs formed upon them now. We have absolutely shut off access because it is, it's not a joke. You don't just to get, go in there because you have access or swipe card and think it's okay to go look. Yes, the council chambers looks perfectly fine. If only you could get there without risking your life. So at this point, if anybody has any questions, I will not call out names, but you will get a sort of letter if you are one of the people who actually went in there without a respirator and without permission. And that's, that's kind of where we are at this point. We, we want to get back in that building. We will get back, back there as quickly as we can. Mayor?
Yeah, before questions, I, I think this gave a very comprehensive report, which we're planning on doing because we were trying to get that report in as quickly as we could yesterday before the, before the council meeting to give y'all the latest update where we are. Yes, it's critical. You know, we have so many different safety issues that we're dealing with. The Governor's Order is first and foremost right now because we can't do that. Even if that gets out the way though, I think you see the next safety issue. The next safety issue is the environmental. I think this administration has been very transparent with this and they're very clear that we, just like the rest of you all, want to get back to live council meetings. But we're going back to the Punch Train Center. The Punch Train Center has worked. It's not, it's not the best scenario for us to be at a council meeting, but we're going to look for a better area to do it and try to overcome those issues that we've had until the Governor's Orders lifted and until we're finished rehabbing the building basically. So I, like, I appreciate everybody's cooperation. I appreciate my administration's hard work they're doing on this. And I mean, I can one have not been inside that building since we were told not to go into it. There's been no need to go into it. With that, if anybody has any questions, we can answer now or, I don't know, 13B is still going to be a discussion. We can, we've already answered those. We've already made our presentation so you know where we are. But if you have questions, we'd like to answer them now.
Hi, Councilwoman McKinney, you have the floor.
Thank you Council President. And thank you, thank you Mayor for the presentation and all the officials. I appreciate that. You know, I think it's important to return to, to in council meetings, which is why I put 13B on. I have a couple of questions with regard to, I, and there were no specific dates mentioned. So I know you said mid-May. Is there, so what is, first of all, what is the plan? I know you kind of went over your remediating, but is there any dates that we can shoot for, for us to be back in council chambers?
No ma'am.
Okay. Um, so is it possible that we could never go back to council chambers?
Absolutely not. That's silly.
Okay, so, um. Okay, so let's see. So Doug was mentioning that the Governor's Orders have 50% capacity in government, buildings, government meetings. But so am I understanding that restaurants and bars are at full capacity, but government buildings are still at 50%?
Is Doug unmuted?
No, he's going on now. I'll have to look at the, the state Fire Marshal latest requirements for restaurants. I was provided you the information on conventions and events as provided by the state Fire Marshal, but I can give you that information.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're opening up because I know that some people have gone to lunch and some people, you know, from the council and other people have gone to lunch and have interacted without masks because obviously at the meetings you, or at the restaurant, you can sit less than six feet apart with no mask on and you're in a restaurant. So, you know, I mean, I'm just pointing that out, so. You know, I think it's really important and I think the You know, I think it's really important, and I think the most important thing, and the reason that I even, I put this on, which is because I think that it's important for the council to have a discussion on what, on what, you know, what we do, because the charter says that we decide what, where we have our, you know, where the council meetings are held. It doesn't, we're the city council elected by members of the city and members of the public. We're not selected by the mayor. We're a separate branch, we're a legislative branch, and I appreciate the mayor and the administration that they have a different role. And I think that it's important, you know, I think that, I feel like it's very important for us to make sure that we have that, those roles separated, and understand that as a council member, I represent a constituency. And, you know, Mr. Morella has been, has been very vocal, and other members of the public have been very vocal about returning to in-person council meetings and also returning to council chambers. So, you know, making, making sure that we have that discussion, making sure that we give that priority, and think that we're moving forward. And I know that, you know, in the past, we have, in the past, we have been briefed on it in past meetings, but with the new order, the March 31st order, we actually haven't spoken about it. So I wanted to have an open discussion about that and get an update, because it was my understanding from the news, from the reported on the news, that restaurants and bars and other facilities throughout Louisiana are also open with no capacity limitations. Only, the only capacity limitations are on outdoor venues that hold, you know, and venues that hold larger capacities, such as the Superdome or Taggormley, or the Musburnolino Stadium, you know, items like that. So I appreciate, I appreciate your briefing. I would like, you know, to have a date, have a date in there for in-person meetings, sooner rather than later, because especially if the government's order on April 28th is lifted, that they, and they no longer have any capacity restrictions. Our meeting on May 6th after that would be the perfect opportunity to get back together, maybe not in council chambers, but certainly at the Ponchartrain Center, I'm very open to that, I think it's important. Like I said, thank you for all that information. And being in the, you know, being back, returning back to council chambers, you know, is a high priority to me. I think that that represents the city council and the government, the body of government that we represent. And I know that we have been doing this, these Zoom meetings, you know, and have been successful in some instances, I couldn't actually hear the pastor, some of the prayer was going in and out. So, you know, technology is great, but we're moving forward to a more open and be more back to normal. And I think that that's important. Harahan, Jefferson Parish has been meeting a lot. Harahan's facilities are much smaller. Also, the state legislature, as I understand, is going back to their full-time, to their committee rooms. And I believe also, you know, Congress and Senate have been returning into their chambers. I think that the city of Kenner needs to go back to being in our, in our chambers, or at least in person. Thank you.
I appreciate.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Zahn, you have the floor.
And Councilwoman McKinney, I want to echo your words, because your words are an echo of my words. I am absolutely in favor, as I have stated, you know, three times before now, that we are looking at sometime in May, no later than June, to the Ponchartrain Center. And it sounds like you do agree with me that going to the Ponchartrain Center would be the proper place to go, while the council chambers are being, even if the order gets lifted, still have environmental issues. So, you know, I don't think the state, I don't think the parish, I don't think the city of Harahan have an environmental issue in their chambers or in their buildings. So it makes them a little, it makes us a little unique compared to them. So I think the presentation has answered your concerns. I think we're moving in the right direction, I think we're both saying the same thing, just a little bit differently, that we want to go back to live council meetings, like I've discussed before, told you all this. While the council does choose when to have a council meeting, they by charter don't choose where to have it. We're choosing to have it at the Ponchartrain Center, and I do remember many discussions, and I was one of the first ones that said to the council president at the time, George Branigan, and I think George will remember this. When we first got hit with COVID, I said, George, where do you want to have it? You want to have it outside? You want to do it at the pavilion? Outside, we'll set up tents. You want to do it at Veterans Park? I think you all decided as a council to go to Zoom, and I totally supported that. I thought that was the best way to do it, as the pandemic actually got worse anyway. Then when we started to get out of the peak, when it started to become low, George was still council president, I think, and I had another discussion with George. Either George or Glenn Hayes had an idea of going, I can't remember which one it was, might be George, going to Senate Court at the Espey Mall. I supported that. I've supported everything that the council has said, this is where we think of going. If anybody remembers that story different, this is the time to say it. Because I don't remember it different, I think George remembers that that way. I think the majority of colleagues know it that way. So as we say the same thing, maybe just a little bit different, we're going back before June to the Ponchartrain Center, I think we're all in agreement with that. I've had numerous conversations with a few of y'all, not you, Council McKinney, individually about what we're doing besides having it publicly, and it's been total support on that. So I look forward to the live council meetings. I look forward to the day that every city building does not have a, an issue with mold because of lack of maintenance, and I'll leave it at that, because it is a lack of maintenance. And I think we need to get together as a whole, go to a safe environment for our constituents, no limit on the amount of public, and get back to live council meetings, because we didn't want to wait, give those two weeks, three weeks after Easter. Look, we, most of us have been vaccinated, hopefully, everybody here has been vaccinated, not to put any of the public in danger, if you haven't been, because I for one have been vaccinated. I'll be fine by the time we go back. I don't want to be the reason why somebody in the public comes in contact with me and they get sick. So I would hope each and every one of you all, if you haven't had COVID, I know some of you have had COVID, so you're probably fine, but let's not make the members of the public sick either. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. Councilman Wilmot, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to thank Councilwoman McKinney for bringing this to light, and the administration as well. Hearing this and allowing the public to hear this is very important. We need to get back to normal council meetings, so I think have better access for the public, one. And two, but we need to do it safely. So that's all this discussion, I think it sounds like everybody's hitting on the same notes. So I appreciate everybody's efforts, and we need to be safe. I do have a question, I'm not sure if it's for Elos or Chad Pittfield, but as far as the actual type of mold that we're looking at, is that, and I heard him say earlier, he wants employees to return home to their families. And surely, absolutely. But my question is, is it that serious of a type of mold? There's different types of molds. So I don't know if he knows the answer to that, or Elos knows it, but I'm just curious to know, in general terms, is, what type of illnesses can it cause, or do we know that?
I'll answer that, we do know that, and that information will be provided by the Occupational Medicine Physician. We have had a situation like this before in another building that we had to evacuate as a result. So we contact Ashner, with whom we have a contract, they review the report, they tell us what issues are necessary, which personnel should and should not be there. At this point, until Elos gives us an all-clear, no one's going back. But in terms of what testing, baseline testing needs to be done, that will be coming out of Ashner. So yeah, it is of the type that causes concern. What concern and what testing is required will be coming from Dr. Tamimi at Ashner.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. So there is a health risk that we're looking at, that's of concern. Okay, well, that's, that's all I have, and I appreciate everybody's efforts on this. And again, we all would like to get back to in-person meetings as soon as possible, of course, but we need to do it safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hayes, you have the floor, sir.
Well, I for one want to recognize the administration for recognizing and administering the proper protocols to get us back to the chamber, and also, though, to keep everybody healthy. So, thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Branigan, you have the floor, sir.
Well, if there's anybody that didn't want to leave the council chambers, it was me, in the middle of my presidency last, last spring. But I think that the cards that we were dealt with this COVID-19 virus, and basically in the spring, nobody knew what the hell was going on, okay? That's the bottom line. I think that the process that has been used by the administration and the council for holding meetings, we have had numerous constituents say that the Zoom meetings have gone well. And look, I like personal meetings, being able to see the people that show up at the meetings, you can talk to them. If they have a problem, you can, you know, take a look at it and see what you can do about it. It's different on Zoom, but it's something that we have to do with. Once that building is fixed, then hopefully the restrictions of the numbers in the space is, will not be an issue at that time. I look forward to going back into the council chambers, once it is safe, and that decision has to be made by the administration.
And I apologize if it came across that George wanted to leave the council chambers, that's not what I meant, George. I meant that dealing with the council president.
No, no.
We had to work on it, you know, one-on-one, and I made it clear to you when everybody made the decision to leave, go to Zoom. Then I said, look, whatever you want to do, Zoom, different places. I didn't mean that George Branigan said, oh, I'm getting out of here.
No, 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 I, no, I, and I understand that. I just, you know, as a selfish stand, from a selfish standpoint, I would much rather have had my six months working from, you know, the council.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the same with Glenn Hayes, too, I'm sure that, you know, he feels the same way I do. But we were dealt a bunch of, a bunch of cards, and it was all jokers, and it was no aces. So the bottom line is, we handled it the way that we needed to handle it. I agree with Christie that we want to go back into council chambers, but it's got to be done at the proper time.
Thank you, Councilman. I do not see any. Councilwoman McKinney.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you, President Carroll. I guess, I thank you for all of your comments, and Mayor Zahn, I appreciate you working with us. I just do want to pressure and hope and recommend that, you know, the sooner that we can get back to in-person meetings, May, early May, hopefully, then the better. And I think that having this is, it is open, and I appreciate, you know, everyone being open, listen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Zahn, you have something else to say?
And I totally agree with Councilwoman McKinney. I'm not going to sit here and say the first meeting in May, because there's a lot of logistics to go into it. I have to talk with each and every one of you all about different things that have happened between now and May. But my commitment stands like it does in the past to you all, and also to the public. Sometime in May, no later than June, you can, you can absolutely take that. There's some other things we have to talk about, probably as administration with the council, about where we need to go. We have some things that we're working on, we have a big meeting at the Ponchartrain Center on Tuesday that I'd like to keep quiet for right now, that I'm working on with some other groups. Depending on where they're going to go, that would depend on where we go. So to sit here and say, early May, I can't say that. I'm not going to say no to early May, but there's just so many, the administration has so many moving parts every day. Something changes all the time. So sometime in May, no later than June, that is my commitment to you and the public with the peak, with no, with no peak, not the peak, with no peak occurring between now and then either.
All right, let's wrap it up, Councilwoman McKinney.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess, I mean, the only thing I want to, I do want to express some support in doing in-person is the budget hearings that are going to be, that are usually held in May. I'd like to have those in person, I think that's important, to have, to have people.
Councilwoman McKinney, I don't want to, that's not the topic we're talking about now, so we can do that, but not right now.
And I agree with both y'all, and that's one of the things I want to talk to y'all about. I agree with Greg, though, let's wait for that, because I'd rather do that one-on-one with you all, and get a, get a feel where we're going with it. The administration opened up to the council, so council chairman, I appreciate that, but you'll be one of the first ones we're speaking to on that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Madam? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, that will conclude the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilwoman McKinney, second by Councilmember Carroll to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segur?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Motion passed to seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings. We have none, item 10 is opening of bids, we have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. Item 11A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,813, and ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted by the city of Kenner on March 17, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, more particularly amending and rezoning lots L3A, L4A, lots G1 through G4, and lots B1 through B8, Square 465, Highway Park subdivision, from RR1, single-family residential, to SI, special industrial, and amending and rezoning lots G5 through G8, Square 465, Highway Park subdivision, from RR1, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential, and directing, authorizing, and empowering the planning directive for the city of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the city of Kenner.
Motion by Councilmember Segur, second by Councilmember Branigan, to open the floor for public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segur?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passed to seven zero.
Mr. Campo, do we have anyone, or do we have a presentation?
Council President, the planning department does have a brief presentation for this case.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, I'm going to share my screen right now. And hope everyone can see that. Thank you. The applicant in this particular case is Mr. Luis Soto-Mayor, 1107 Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana 70062. The petition property, the subject lots are all located in Square 465, bounded by 21st Street to the south, Connecticut Avenue to the east, Colorado Avenue to the west, and 22nd Street to the north. These lots are currently undeveloped. Property is also currently zoned RR1, single-family residential. If you'll notice that essentially the surrounding the property, it's all RR1, single-family residential. Lot 2A, located north, abutting the property, is developed as a single-family residential home. Lots L3 and L4 in Square 465, which front Connecticut and abut the property on the north. Those two lots are zoned RR1. They're also previously part of the airport buyout program. Lots 1A, 48A to the south, are also part of the airport buyout program. They're developed, actually, they're undeveloped and zoned RR1. The property is located to the east and Square 466 across Connecticut, are a mix of residential and sub making lots, they're all zoned RR1, single-family residential. And the property located to the west, across Colorado, is owned by the airport, except for lot 1C1 on the north side of that block, which is in private ownership and is developed as a large Gerber's Collision Center. There are essentially two components to this particular rezoning request. The first is to rezone a combination of former airport property and six privately-owned lots that front Colorado Avenue. uh, from RR1 to SI Special Industrial. This particular rezoning, if you notice on the, uh, survey lots B1 through, uh, through B8 were purchased by the airport as part of the buyout program. These cannot be developed residentially. Previous airport buyout properties surrounding the subject lots to the south and the west have been rezoned to special industrial to accommodate development on those properties. Also, if you noticed in square 464 to the west, and as I mentioned previously, lots L2 and L3 to the north were all part of the airport buyout program. The lots in square 464 shaded in blue are actually part of the airport's main property line. So those are within the actual airport boundaries. In addition, the, uh, lots referenced above, the applicant is also requesting that six lots, which were not part of the buyout program and are, and remain in private ownership, uh, G1 through G4, L3A and L4A uh, also be rezoned to special industrial. Lots G1 through G4 directly across from airport-owned property. The boundary line, as I mentioned, and lots L3 and L4 are located directly across from the Gerber Collision Center. The rezoning of these to special industrial will have minimal impact at any on any of the surrounding properties. The second part of his request involves rezoning four lots that are in private ownership that front Connecticut Avenue from R2, from RR1, RR1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two-Family Residential. As I stated, these lots were not purchased as part of the airport buyout program. You do notice though that two-thirds of the lots that front Connecticut Avenue on, on that square are owned by the airport and so will never develop residentially. So this is the only four lots. Uh, as part of their, uh, early neighborhood meeting, the applicant met with the neighbors and they were particularly interested in making sure that these four lots remain residential. They did not want industrial development, any type of uh, commercial industrial development across from their properties. So the applicant is seeking to rezone these to as to, he's seeking to redo, rezone these, excuse me, to R2 Two-Family Residential. And the planning commission recommended approval for this particular case. And that concludes the planning department's presentation. Let me unshare.
Thank you, Mr. Dufour. Mr. Campo, is there anyone in the audience who, uh, wanting to speak?
I don't see any hands up, Councilman.
Any of the council people or administration? I do not see any hands up. Okay. Motion by Councilman Segura, second by Councilmember Branigan to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero.
Motion by Councilman Segura, second by Councilmember Branigan to approve. But before we vote, Councilman Segura, since this is your district, would you like to say a few words as it relates to this project?
Certainly. Thank you. Uh, yeah, as, uh, Mr. Dufour outlined, this is a mixture of property that, uh, was at one time residential uh, with houses on it, but then the airport bought it out as part of their noise buyout lawsuit settlement. Um, when they bought out property with, uh, houses on it, uh, they tore those houses down and made it all green space. Uh, after about twenty-five, six, seven years, they finally put them up for auction in 2016. Uh, and they sold to private individuals who could then, uh, develop them uh, as allowed by the City of Kenner's zoning. Since a lot of these properties were R1, they could not uh, develop them to residential because a airport put covenants on those lots to prevent them from using them for residential. So that is why we have some land, uh, being asked to rezone to special industrial right now because that's the airport, uh, purchased land. Then we have some land that was never purchased by the airport because they never had houses on it and they chose not to buy the lots. So those lots remained residential through these twenty-five, thirty-year that the airport has owned the surrounding property. And, um, we once before had a, a developer that wanted to uh, take the residential lot and, uh, turn it into, uh, special industrial, but based on the objection from the across-the-street residents, the planning board, uh, recommended against it. Subsequently, this council, uh, accepted that approval and did not approve that rezoning. The property was sold and the, uh, individual, Mr. Soto Mayor that owns it now, is only asking that we rezone that single-family residential to two-family residential. And when we had the community meeting, uh, we had a, a very good turnout, about fifteen or twenty people or so, if I recall. And, uh, even though they have their, uh, overall concerns with putting the special industrial, uh, properties into commerce with the detriment of the quality of life in their neighborhood because of the ingress and egress. Uh, we do have a, a solution for that pending, uh, with the closure of the West Napoleon Canal in a street on it uh, between Williams and the airport access road that would then allow the special industrial lots to use that as their ingress, egress. The residents became, um, and have been more suited to allow the special industrial to go through. Uh, as well as the residents, the lots that, uh, are being asked to go from R1 to R2, uh, they would certainly and clearly were, were satisfied to have those lots uh, be some form of residential instead of the special industrial. So, with all of this said, uh, I, I encourage and hope that all my colleagues will support it. That this is a, been a, um, long-time problem for this subdivision to deal with in light of the airport's, uh, haphazard way of buying out properties that, uh, had some residents on it and then others that didn't and then leave residents, uh, still in that area that they did not even buy out. So, we're trying to make the best of what's left, of what's there, and so far this is, um, been relatively agreeable with the residents, so I ask passage of it is. And thank y'all for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilman. I think, I think it's always important, uh, to get a perspective from the, the councilperson that is involved with the project. Uh, particularly for, for us, as other council members who, who are not, you know, don't have the information as much as they have, particularly get a perspective from the residents' viewpoints. And I think is, thank you, Councilman Segura, for giving that. You and I both have had to deal with, uh, an exodus for both of our districts that has gone over the past twenty-five, thirty years and it is evolving and changing constantly. So, thank you for that information. Motion by Councilman Segura, second by Councilmember Branigan to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,817 and orders accepting the permanent donation of five works of art currently on loan from Henry and Pat Shane.
Motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Branigan to approve. And again, before we move on, Councilman Hayes, uh, you have about four or five of these structures. Do you want to mention anything as it relates to the owners or the donation or from your perspective, sir?
Well, obviously, uh, especially on power. It has really enhanced the neighborhood. No problems, uh, all I hear are compliments in terms of, uh, enhancing the neighborhood as much as possible. And I want to publicly thank Henry and Pat Shane, two wonderful citizens and very generous people who reside in our city. So again, I'm all for this.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Council, Mayor Zahn, did you have, Mayor Zahn? Mayor Zahn? You, you're on mute. There you go.
Sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to add what probably Councilman Brennan wants to add, and I know he's going to add more to it. Um, the work that he's doing on Loyola right now by Kennedy School, what he plans on doing further down. I mean, with the landscaping, the irrigation, everything he's doing in District 5 and everything he does throughout the city, I want to thank him and Pat, uh, like Councilman Hayes said, two good friends, two good neighbors, two good residents, and giving back to the City of Kenner. So thank you, Henry and Pat, and the whole Shane family.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Yes, Mayor, you, you said it well, as so did, uh, Councilman Hayes, so I just duplicate both of your comments, find people that have done a whole lot and continue to do great things for our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Brennan to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13 is mo, resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Kevin Delahoussaye to the City of Kenner Civil Service Board in accordance with section 8.02A7 of the Charter of the City of Kenner.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Carroll to approve. Council members, Councilman Brennan, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just, uh, I know many people know Kevin Delahoussaye. He's been a longtime resident in District 4 and 5. Uh, good, good person, good man, and, uh, I, I I'm very happy to see this move forward and ask for everyone's support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Carroll to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13B is a resolution requesting the city council meetings resume being held in person in the council chambers. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request from Councilman McKinney to remove this item from the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
If I could get a motion and a second for a removal?
Motion by Councilmember McKinney, second by Councilmember Segura to remove. Council members, please vote.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,818 and ordinance accepting the lowest and only responsive bid received from Retief Oil and Fuel LLC to provide unleaded gasoline and diesel fuel for the City of Kenner in accordance with sealed bid number 21-6590 and an amount not to exceed $665,000 annually.
Motion by Councilman Brennan, second by Councilmember Hayes to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,819 and ordinance authorizing the purchase of 800 Dare T-shirts, including shipping at a cost of $5,852.20 from Creative Product Sourcing Incorporated, a sole-source provider for the Kenner Police Department.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Wilmot to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Hey.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,820 and orders accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fabri-Tech Incorporated for the installation and replacement of an awning at Children's Castle in Rivertown in accordance with letter bid number 21-1969 in the amount of $10,170.80 for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Mil Wilmot, second by Councilmember Brennan to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15D is a resolution approving change order number one final to the contract agreement with Walter J. Barnes Electric Company Incorporated dated March 19, 2018 for Veterans Boulevard Lighting Airport to Loyola State Project Number H period 010973, Kenner Public Works Project Number 2014-008-SL, increasing the contract amount by $18,207.61 adding four working days and accepting the project as complete by the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember Carroll to approve. But before we vote, uh, I'd like to ask the Director, uh, Director for Public Works, is this, is this the same string of lights from Bainbridge to Loyola? And if so, sir, would you like to give your, and the mayor to give a little present, just a little note of what, what exactly happened for this project?
Mr. Chairman, uh, we also have someone in the public to address as well. I just want to let you know before you send it to a vote.
Thank you, ma'am. Director?
Yeah, yes, Councilman. This, uh, project has been going on, seems like a very long time. We had some difficulties up front. There was a fiber optic line in the way that had to be removed, so it was off to a late start. Um, this, this is, um, this project's been going on a long time and it provides excellent lighting now from the interchange or the inter, interchange project all the way to Bainbridge. And hopefully everybody's had a chance to go out there and see this. Uh, it's lighting up the street, uh, just what we, what we needed and been waiting for it for a long time. Uh, this change order increases the amount by $18,000, but I wanted to add that the project came in about $100,000 under the estimate. So even with the $18,000 add, we're still saving about $80,000.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Campo?
Mr. Al Morella would like to speak.
Mr. Morella, you have the floor, sir.
Al Morella, 4262 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 49 years. Uh, they just answered the questions I had about this resolution. Uh, so, but I just wanted to talk about it anyway and let you know that they did answer my question and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the fact that it come, that it came in, uh, less than what it, uh, less than what it was going to be. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Morella. And before we vote, you know, I'd like to thank the work for pu, of, of public work, the administration, everybody involved in this. As we all know, the airport has moved uh, lots of its operations north and this additional lighting has offered support. It has offered a sense of safety to the, to the millions of people that will be coming through our fair city, uh, to feel comfortable, some sense of comfort. Some sense of comfortable, never ever total safety, but some sense. And I think as we evolve this corridor, I think it will become something that we can be proud of. So if I don't see any hands. Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember Carroll to approve. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segur?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance authorizing the use of Louisiana State Contract Number four four zero 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 one eight seven six one with Vehicle Parts and Equipment Company to provide light bars and sirens in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Item sixteen B is an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase to remove and install new diesel driver and fire pump along with replacing single wall fuel tank and damaged four-inch drive valve at the Poncharian Convention and Civic Center in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars by Louisiana Fire Extinguisher Incorporated for the City of Kenner. Item sixteen C is an ordinance approving amendment number two to the agreement with Pure Technologies U.S. Incorporated regarding the condition assessment of the Shatow Transfer Station Force Main to increase the not-to-exceed amount of the agreement by four hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred dollars for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DXP Enterprises doing business as Delta Process Equipment for an agreement to provide self-priming sewer pumps and related materials on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty-five seventy-nine and an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for the period of two years for the Department of Waste Water. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DXP Enterprises doing business as Delta Process Equipment for an agreement to provide submersible chopper, sewer pumps, and related materials on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty-five eighty and an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars per year for a period of two years for the Department of Waste Water. Item sixteen F is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of Bossier City's bid number S zero three dash two one with Covington Sales and Service Incorporated for the purchase of one new asphalt patching trailer in the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilman Segur, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a quick moment to bring out, you see my background that April is April is Autism Acceptance Month. It's a pretty sensitive thing, you know, with individuals with autism, trying to raise them and deal with them in our public life. And I just wanted to bring out that, you know, I wish everybody would take that in consideration when they have the opportunity to come in contact with artistic individuals to understand that they just need a little bit more sensitivity and dealing with them. And that everything, you know, in that case will be fine. But anyway, it's National Autism Month, and I want to keep that in our minds. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Segur. Mayor Zan?
I want to add to what Councilman Segur was talking about. I want to add to what Councilman Segur was talking about. I want to thank Chad Pittfield and his team with Mark Llorioso and also with Parkway's, Journal Services and Parkway's, the two groups under him, two other groups under him, that actually lit up some of our Kenner signs in blue. So I think that shows our support, along with what Councilman Segur was talking about. I like your background, Councilman Segur. But thanking those guys for doing that and lighting it up. Look, at the last minute, too, I think it was like Holy Thursday, we were talking about it on the night before, and I think they might even worked on Good Friday when some of the city was off, getting everything lit as much as they could. So, thank you, Chad. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jermaine. Thank you, everyone who was part of that.
Thank you, Mayor, and a worthy cause for sure. Councilman Branigan?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have family members that have had, that have autism and also some friends that their grandchildren have autism. And it's a situation where you really need to be really careful when you're around these children because of the challenges that they face around large crowds and things like that. The City of Kenner will have an inclusion park that is going to be built for children with disabilities and challenges in their life. And it's a big deal, and it's coming. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that when you're around these children that have these challenges, just be aware because they do not like loud, boisterous people, you know, yelling, screaming. It really sets them off.
Thank you, Councilman. I just, I would like to say first, thank you, guys, for all of that. Thanks for the different departments that helped support it. The Autism Month. The pictures, the signs, Councilman Segur background to show that, you know, we care, that obviously we care about everyone. But it's always, it always helps to show a little bit more support for individuals who have challenges that was no cause of their own. I'd like to also congratulate on behalf of the City of Kenner, Bonbow High School, Mai, and Councilman McKenney, and Councilman Wilmot, Alma Mata, for the boys' basketball team and their coach, Micah Higgins, who was a product of the Kenner Recreation Department. The boys were ranked fifth in the state. They're undefeated district champs for the third time in a row. They had a twenty-four and six record. Mr. Willie Allen was the district MVP, also along with Namor DeJoy, All District, Theo Johnson, All District, and as I mentioned, Coach Higgins was Coach of the Year in the state. Mr. Allen made the All-Star Team, the Gatorade Team, and was eventually named the Outstanding Player in the state. So, children who had less challenges than the one that Councilman Segur mentioned, but still children still the same. And we want to congratulate them for their outstanding job. And all of the children that participated in sports in high school, because it has been a challenge. Just to mention, you know, we have some neighbors, Crescent City Boys won the state championship. John Curtis Females won the state championship, who I'm sure had some Kenner kids on their team. So thanks again for all their support, their accomplishments, and what all they learned, and we hope and pray that they move to the next level is as much successful as your high school. Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to reiterate what Councilman Branigan was saying. And I'm hoping and looking forward to that we would have a park for autism and an inclusion park. I think it's desperately needed and throughout anywhere in the state, of course, but it would be certainly welcome, in my opinion, to Kenner. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Councilman McKenney has her hand up, sir.
Oh, okay, Council McKenney. I didn't see.
That's okay. Thank you, Council President. I just want to recognize I think Kenner is unique. The outdoor playground, but we also have an indoor playground in the Esplanade Mall that is designed specifically for autistic children. I've been there several times with, had birthday parties there because I know the owners. I'm not sure if they're still open because of COVID at this point, but there's lots of resources in the City of Kenner for, you know, for autistic children to play. And thank you, you know, we're obviously in support of them. And I, when I was growing up and working at a summer camp, I, my first experience with a young autistic boy. Yes, it's, you know, you have to be full of compassion and full of love and understanding to, to, you know, handle and being community with them. So I am very happy to recognize them this month.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and no motions to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Campo, do we have anyone?
Mr. Al Morella is up first.
Mr. Al Morella, you have the floor, sir.
Forty-two, sixty East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, forty-nine years. China virus numbers as of April the sixth. Total test on six million six hundred nine thousand one fifty-eight. Positive cases, three hundred and eighty-one thousand four forty-five. Negative cases, six million two hundred twenty-seven thousand seven thirteen. Total recovery, four hundred forty-seven thousand. Now, I would like to explain what put me on this path to give these numbers. I engage with the mainstream population on a daily basis. I hear stories of people that are suffering, that's going on out here, that's been going on over the year now. I try to dispel some of this fear in our citizens that are actually afraid to go to the doctor of catching this virus, and they wind up very sick with something unrelated. I would like to feel that I'm trying to give some of the people hope and trying to dispel some of this fear. For over a year now, not one elected official on the local level, state level, federal level, not one infectious disease expert, not, no one from the corrupt mainstream news media has mentioned two words other than myself. And those two words are negative cases. All that's ever been done for the last year, over a year, is instill fear in the people and cause the response was worse than the virus itself. So now, I just figured y'all would like to know why I put myself on this call. I did this on my own. I researched these numbers on my own to help people, to try to help people through the rough times that they're going through. That's my motivation. Now, I want to extend my thoughts and my prayers to the victims and their families of the incidents that took place in Texas, Maryland, North Carolina, and the Two Capital Police in Washington, DC. I want to direct this to Councilwoman McKenney. Councilwoman McKenney, I could not agree with you more on getting these meetings back person to person and preferably back in our council chamber. But I also agree with the mayor. At least they're making an effort to do so. As long as there's an effort being made, I can go along with that. As long as the effort is there. But I agree with you, Councilwoman McKenney, and I agree that the effort is at least being made to get us back to some type of normalcy. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Next, Mr. Campo?
Mr. Richard Brown?
Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Brown, eight twenty-four sessions, Lane, Kenner. Two or three points I want to make. First off, I want to say that Kristi McKenney was correct when she said that the council, you know, designates where they shall meet. And section two point one zero of the charter makes that plain. It says all council meetings shall be held in the council chamber of City Hall or such other place as the council may designate by public notice. So she was right, or at least partially right, when she said the council can choose where the meetings are held. The main point I want to address is the upcoming millage renewals. And specifically, I want to, it's a two-part question. First, what is each one of the millages currently being levied at? And then, second, if these renewals are approved, are any of them going to go back up to the approved amount? For example, I understand the garbage millage and the sewer millage have been rolled back or lowered over the years for that we're not currently being taxed at the maximum amount. Even though the renewals are for the original amount, is the city going to or even considering raising the amount that's levied back up to the amount approved by the referendum? That's my question. If someone from the administration can answer that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Foche, it looked like you were jumping up and down, so you can have this one.
Am I jumping up and down, Councilman? I was going to ask Ms. Herring as the Chief Financial Officer just to identify the numbers so that she can say what was the levy and what's the millage, and then I will respond to the rest of Mr. Brown's question.
Ms. Herring, you have the floor.
Thank you. So the millage, because of the levy, because of the assessed values increasing, garbage would collect an additional seventy thousand nine fifty-eight. Fire would collect an additional three thirteen, three eighty-one. And sewer would collect an additional forty-eight thousand two thirty-three. So your garbage millage was one point five two mills going back to the original voted approved amount of one point six one. Fire is seven point zero one, going back to the approved amount, seven point four. And sewer at one point zero eight, going back to the original approved amount of one point one four. Because of the assessment values increase, and that's what makes up the additional revenue.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. Ms. Foche?
If I could, and Mr. Brown, you and I've had this conversation a number of times. I think the last time we had it, we were talking about the Streets Millage. So I've got to say, I really do enjoy having this conversation with you because I know you're very knowledgeable about this. The difference between a millage and a levy is not often understood. The millage is what the people can vote. So the people vote and say, do not tax me more than say ten percent. Okay, so let's say they had a ten mil. It's the people levying the millage. The council can't touch a millage. Only the people can vote a millage. Then the council is the one that says, based upon what we've been told by the public, based upon the maximum amount we've been given by the public, we can levy up to that amount. We don't have to levy up to that amount. We can levy less than that, and that's when people talk about the rollback. We are going out with the millage at the same millage rate originally voted on. The council may, at any time that they think it's appropriate, well, I'd say anytime, at a reassessment year, they can roll the levy back. The millage is the same. The millage is going out in exactly the same millage it did ten years ago. The amount that Liz Herring is calling out, the increases, that's because our property values in Kenner have gone up. If your property value goes up and your tax is based on a percentage, then your tax goes up. In addition to the cost of the services being provided by that millage have also gone up. So you are correct. This is a vote for the maximum amount. The council will be able, in the future, to reduce that amount if they think that is appropriate or if the city no longer needs the mills.
Mr. Brown, before I let you get back, and I will, I'm just going to ask Ms. Foche, as far as it relates to the council for us to reassess, what are the determining factors for us to be able to do it? Is it every year, every two years? How often do we have that ability?
It's at a reassessment. Yeah, I mean, Ed may have, you may need the legal beagle to actually jump in and give you more details, but the time that it normally comes to you is at the reassessment period. So, for example, these millages that the people are voting on now have, in two prior reassessments, been adjusted because of the reassessments. So it would, let's see, our reassessment year was what, last year or the year before? So in two years? And then in six years?
Okay, okay. Attorney, if you don't have it now, is that pretty much consistent every year, every two years for us to be able to have reassessment?
It's, Councilman, I'll have to look that up to be exact. I don't know it for sure. That's not something I know off the top of my head, but I'll be glad to get you. It's not an every-year thing. It's either every two years or every four years.
Okay, thank you. At our next meeting, please share that with everyone.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown, you got the floor. You have another minute and a half.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Just to follow up, then if I understand correctly, all three millages have all three millages have been rolled back somewhat over the years, which basically is what the law requires. And by the way, uh, I believe it's every four years that the, that the law requires that, that the, um, property be reassessed. I'm almost positive it's every four years. But, but the, um, if these millages are approved, just assuming they're approved, then each one of these three millages, the, the, the percentage, the, the millage rate will go back up from the current rate to the approved rate. So in other words, sewer is currently being, being taxed at the rate of 1.08 mills, even though the, the proposition would authorize 1.14. And it, that's what it was 10 years ago. So it will go up to 1.14. The fire millage is authorized at 7.4. It's currently being levied at 7.01 mills. It will automatically go back up to the 7.4. And then the same with garbage. It will go up from 1.52 to 1.61. So each one will go up at least slightly. Um, and by the way, I, I do support the fire millage. I don't know so much about the others. But I think the public needs to understand that, that by passing these, this, these tax referendums, the millage rate, the rate at which your property is being taxed, will go up. And, and you are going to pay more taxes. Your, your, your taxes will go up. Maybe not by much, but they will.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Brown.
I'm, I'm finished. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Foshee, you wanna go before the attorney?
No, never.
No, no, that's okay. I'm, I think I have the answer. Uh, according to state law, the reassessments are every four years.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you, you were correct.
Yep.
Ms. Foshee, did you have any more comments?
Yes, I did. The reason, Richard is right, except there's a piece missing. The reason your taxes are going up is because the value of your property went up. If, I don't think anybody in the city of Kener has had this happen, but let's say you did. If your, the value of your property has gone down in the last 10 years, then by voting on this, you're reducing your taxes, not increasing your taxes. So, uh, so, you know, absolutely. Uh, what he is saying is correct in that the number changes, but it is not related to any raising of the taxes. This is exactly the same millage previously levied. There is an increase. The increase is based on the fact that we pay our taxes on a percentage of value. And the values have increased. It is not the council, or the mayor, or anybody else going out and saying, we want more than we need. No, absolutely not. We've gone out to say, and look, this isn't us. Secretary of State says it's a renewal. Bond Commission says it's a renewal. We're not pretending it's a renewal. It is a renewal. We are renewing the millage at exactly the same rate as 10 years ago. And the council can, at the reassessment years, uh, if they, if they choose to reduce the levy, they will never reduce the millage. They will reduce the levy, the portion of the millage they wish to assess.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Campo.
Mr. Zach Frigo.
Mr. Frigo, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, Zach Frigo's Colgate Place, Kennesaw, Louisiana. And I want to talk about Musburgerlino. I do not understand the administration's issues with the citizens using the track at Musburgerlino. I do not agree with any plan that keeps the citizens off the track. Everyone understands that the track is used by local schools. Musburgerlino's been the premier track in Kener for as long as I can remember. And nothing has changed with the overall usage, other than the citizens are now being denied access. To cite that resurfacing the track is attracting local schools to use the park is very laughable. The schools were using the track when it was in poor shape, and of course they're gonna use it now that it's fixed. Allowing citizens to use the track does not stop schools from using it. They were being shared for decades. The track was long pockmarked and resembled the street in New Orleans rather than a sports track. And for years, we, the citizens, have asked for you to fix it. And finally, a repair was announced, and you share pictures of the progress, like dangling a carrot in front of us. And then all of a sudden, you pull the rug out and announce that we can't use it. The repair costs $150,000, half put up by District 4, yet the residents of District 4 cannot use the track. No one can, except for schools that rent it. Would the residents have afforded the money being spent, knowing they couldn't use the track, with their councilmen? We were told it costs a lot of money, yet twice that amount was just spent to settle with Romelli. We see our money being spent on things we can't use. Our tennis courts are in shambles now. I can't name one outdoor basketball goal for kids to play ball at. We have fields that have random hills of dirt put on them to prevent soccer from being played on them. And we have fields that are locked throughout the day. I went to four parks yesterday, all four were locked. They're locked throughout the day. That is a lie to say they're not locked. I, as a citizen, do not agree with any decision to close the track to public use. And I feel the strong, I strongly feel the majority of my neighbors feel the same way I do. Let's do the right thing and open the track back up for the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Frigo. Mr. Camp, uh, Mr. Branigan, you have the floor.
Well, uh, the bottom line is, the city of Kener, uh, is attracting schools to Musburgerlino. And the track is back in use by the schools. Um, when I was the Booster Club president back in the mid 90s, uh, we did not have six other options for people to go and walk and enjoy the parks in North Kener. There are six in North Kener, there are three in South Kener. I totally understand where you're coming from, that it would be nice and convenient to be able to use that park. But basically, that park is designated to house schools. And the situation there is that I am going to look at the utilization of that park over the next year and ma- make a decision on it. But right now, that, that track is being used for high schools and grammar schools, if they want to. And the softball field is being used by Mount Carmel Academy, which I've been accused of bringing Mount Carmel Academy to that field, which is totally ridiculous. Um, because of my daughter graduating in 2007. So the person that put that out there, uh, you really need to get your facts straight before you, uh, start posting on Facebook. But right now, the track is being used for high schools, and there are six other places that these people can drive to within a mile and use those facilities.
Not one of the soft tracks.
The city, the city of Kener is looking at putting a soft track. And Mayor Zahn, if I am wrong on this, please, please, uh, step up. But there's going to be a track, and I think it's gonna be in City Park. Brian, I'm not trying to go into District 5, but I think that's where it's gonna be. And then there will be a soft track available to the people. But today, it is, it is set up for school use.
Mayor, uh, Mr. Frigo, hold on a second. Mayor Zahn, you had a comment?
I'll let Mr. Frigo go first and finish.
Mr. Frigo, you have a-
He has a, I think he has a response to Councilman Branigan.
Mr. Frigo, you have a minute to respond, sir.
Yeah, real quickly, two things. One thing is, I know Mr. Branigan has told constituents that he is not sure if he would have put the money up had he known the track wouldn't have been over for use. I have seen a copy of that email that you sent, Mr. Bert, Ms. Version. I've seen that copy of the email. Secondly, uh, when was this decision made to not let the people use the track no more? It said it's used for high school and school use. When were the citizens told of this change? Because I don't remember being told this change until a few weeks ago, when we were told the track was never gonna be allowed for us to use again. And that's all I have left to say on it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Frigo. Ben, you wanna go?
No, go ahead, George.
Mr. Frigo, the email that I sent to that lady, uh, I did say that I wish, uh, I wish I would have not put 75,000 up. But when you look at it in the grand scheme of things, in the direction that we are going with the administration and Musburgerlino playground, this is the right thing to do right now. As you are aware, if you looked at prior council meetings, when things are not right, I will go back and change something. Okay? I will attempt to change something when I feel that it's not right. But the residents of District 4 can drive a mile or a half a mile to go and walk. Mayor Zahn.
I, I just want to echo, um, Councilman Branigan's words. Um, yes, we are, and Councilman Brennan, he knows this, Councilman Branigan, we are absolutely in talks with, um, Councilman Dominic Posada, with Justin Parish, who the parish owes us, and I've said this before, again, I sound like a broken record, $100,000 a year on getting to go to some of our parks. It is important that we, um, use that money to go toward, and we've already gotten some prices on it through Chad Pittfield, uh, with recreation, to go toward making that park at Kennesee Park a walking track. I, I'm almost amazed that this is still a discussion because, and Councilman Branigan, you know this, because you texted me one day when you were there, and I've seen it myself. Kennesee Park is, is packed with people walking on the track. So I don't think those people, those individuals, and I think Councilman Branigan more agrees, so will Councilman Brennan, and all the council. It, I don't think the complaint is coming from a wide group of constituents. Uh, it is unfortunate that sometimes direction changes. And I think that's to defend Councilman Branigan on some comments that he made in the email, because we've had discussions since then. Yeah, we were redoing the track. As we were redoing the track, we had people that came to us. And as he was putting his money in, like I was putting money in for recreation, people were coming to us saying, hey, look, we want to pay to use this track. So things change along the way, and I think that's what happened with Councilman Branigan, that, well, things change because now we're putting it back into this. And Councilman Branigan and Councilman Brennan have agreed with me, let's go to Councilman Posada and put the money that we can put into a soft walking track at Kennesee Park. So I don't fault Councilman Branigan for his email, where he said, I wouldn't have done it if I'd have known this. He knew it after, when we started moving in a different direction. Like he said, he comes back and makes changes. He's come back and have made a change, I think, in the email that he sent, saying, hey, look, we're going in a different direction now. Councilman Brennan, if I overs, if I, if I overstepped my bounds and I misspoke, please correct me. But I think that's the discussions that we've had. I think that's what makes sense. I think that's the direction we're moving in. We continue to say this, I think, at the last three council meetings. This is the last time I'm talking about it. I, I'm, I'm not talking about it again because the schools that recreation are attracting, and the more schools that want to come, I think we're moving, I know, we're moving in the right direction. Again, I'll say this, you know, we can never be the Kener of tomorrow if we continue to be the Kener of the past. I don't want to be the Kener of the past. I want to be the Kener of tomorrow. We have a lot of issues with money coming into the city. We need to make sure we grab as much as we can, but at the same time, supply of, you know, supply the needs of the, of the constituents and put a walking track that's soft in District 5, which Councilman Brennan has no problem with, which I think the rest of the council has no problem with. So, I, I mean, look, I, I'm not gonna discuss this anymore. The public's free to come up and talk about what they want to talk about. But this is the direction that we think we need to go in to make everyone happy. And when people say that the residents of Kener can't use it, if I went to John Curtis School, if I went to Mount Carmel, and my kids, and my kids went, um, to, uh, Kennesee Discovery, and also Bonneville, I'd be offended. I'd be offended with those comments, because some of those people are Kener residents. They're using it.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. And just, Councilman Wilmot, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to echo my thoughts on it. I, I, and I get where George is coming from, the mayor, but at the same time, the citizens, they need someplace to go now that's something comparable. Um, and it seems like if they can't have a timeframe or a time period that they can utilize that track, and it seems like it could be worked in, in my opinion. But if it can't, they need to have something now, something more accessible, something close, and not far away that you have to jump in your car and drive to. Um, I think it needs to be in their backyard. It, it's their park. It's been there for, for ever. And, and they, they pay the taxes. They're entitled to it. And I think we need to do something to satisfy those persons, whether it's a timeframe or have, if you have something further away, then, then it needs to be now, not later. That's my opinion. So if there's something y'all can do, work it out, please do so. This isn't something that's gonna go away. It's only gonna get worse because the people aren't happy. And I'm sensing it, and I'm seeing it, and I'm hearing it. So please think, think harder on it. Don't shut it down, Mayor, and say this is the last time you're talking about it. Because this is a problem, and I ask that y'all address it. Thank you.
Councilman Branigan.
Uh, Councilman Wilmot, as I said earlier, I am going to monitor this and look at it and see what type of solution can come about, if a solution can come about.
Uh, Councilman Branigan, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, since everybody's talking, I like to give some, some of my comments as it relates to, and my comments obviously as it relates to Musburgerlino, but it also relates to the playgrounds. It relates to the parks. It relates to the gyms. It relates to the tit lots. Obviously, we've had a pandemic to deal with. But all of those areas, we need to start ramping up and doing, having more opportunities for the people in the city of Kener. It just, it just simple as that. If it's not so much for revisions or updates, the opportunity for children to participate is paramount and important. And you hear that all the time everywhere you go, particularly if we see other jurisdictions, municipalities, who are, who are way in advance than we are in the city of Kener. So that's just, that's just as important as it is, uh, for Musburgerlino, as it is for every recreation. I agree with Mr. Councilman Branigan that he does, he does look at it in a, in a situation. He does change. He does evolve on things. I'm gonna say my personal opinion is more in line with Councilman Wilmot, that we should be able to work this schedule in for the general public. We should be able to have a time to have the schools and the high schools participate as well, because there's a scheduled timeframe that everybody can, can be able to, to use the park. Hopefully, it doesn't take us a year to figure this out. Because this is something that we're gonna have to deal with after this meeting, the next meeting, and the meeting on. So I look forward to conversations with the Recreation Director, with Councilman Branigan, with the administration, to look at something that we can do as it relates to supporting additional usage of the facility. And that's all I have to say. Councilman Branigan, you have the floor.
Uh, and I want people to know that Musburgerlino is very close to my heart. Uh, in 1994, when I had 1,200 kids playing ball, I went to the city, to our Councilman Louis Conjemmy, and asked him to build us a, a quadplex in the back of the gym on an open field. And he said the city didn't have money to do it. And I asked him, if I raised the money, can I do it? And he told me, yes. I think that he thought that I was just pulling his leg. Well, let me tell you something. Eight months later, they had a quadplex back there, which, uh, actually was a fiveplex. And we had 1,200 kids playing ball out of that park. Today, it's a different ballgame. We will not have 1,200 kids signed up for baseball, softball, and t-ball in the whole city. It's a different game. Kids are playing on travel ball teams. It's all over the place. But I can tell you that Musburgerlino is very close to my heart. I've got a lot of sweat, tears, and blood out there. I will address this with the administration, and we will see if there's a solution. But we have to go about the process in a certain way, and that's what the plan is.
Mayor Zahn, you have the floor.
Just to come back to what Councilman, um, Branigan's saying, yes, 1,200 probably at Musburgerlino alone, 1,200 here, 1,600 there, other playgrounds. I think unless it's changed in the last day or so, and Chad Pittfield, can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we had 380 for baseball citywide. So it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, but under 400, right at 400, signed up citywide. So yes, Councilman Branigan, absolutely, things have changed. And that's why we're trying to change with the terms, to attract the things that can help us all. So it's, it's a different world.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Campo.
Ms. Stacy Alessandra.
Ms. Stacy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Can you please let me know when I have just enough time to ask at the end one question to, uh, Ms. Foshee about the renewals, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to talk about Musburgerlino. I'm very angry about this and the way the situation is being portrayed. This isn't just a handful of disgruntled citizens. This is many. This is the hottest topic that's being talked about right now amongst the citizens. I'm angry that $75,000 of our money in District 4 was used for that park. And yet the residents, we are literally being told that track is too- and yet the residents, we are literally being told that track is too good for us to walk on. Can you believe that? The people who paid for it, it's too good for us. I don't see why we can't use it when it's not being in use by a school. This is ridiculous. I don't wanna go, as Mayor Zahn said, to the other track that's packed during COVID. We should be doing everything humanly possible to open up every single outdoor facility that this city owns. I wanna use that track. I don't wanna use one of the other six tracks. I wanna use the one that my money paid for. And also, it's the best one. I'll wanna go there. When Councilman Brannigan, I bet when you were out there building that park with your blood, sweat, and tears, you and your family used that park. Well, I would like to be able to use this park now with my son. Our money paid for it. You know darn well, when you put up that money, you did not know that the citizens of District Four would be denied the use of it. Yeah, I know things change and all, and I understand, you know, the mayor constantly calls you to back him up on everything. It's disproportionate to every other council member that you're constantly being called to back him up on his decisions. I understand you make your own decisions, and you're making this decision, but it's very unpopular with the people. It's counter to what your constituents want, and yet we're being ignored. You're gonna revisit this in a year? A year, maybe?
You have a minute, Ms. Stacy. You have a minute.
We demand to use Musburgerlino now. Now, thank you, Councilman Carol. My question to Ms. Foshee about the renewals, if you could just please clarify this. When the voters voted for the millages, we voted for a certain amount. And that's the same amount that we will be voting on again. It's just a renewal, same amount that we're voting on. However, in the reassessment years, the council has the ability to adjust how much we're being levied to compensate for increase in home values. So right now, it's my understanding, I think, did we just have a reassessment last year? Was it a reassessment year last year, and y'all adjusted it to make it so it's net neutral?
Stacy, it was either last year or the year before. I can't, I'm looking at that now. It's been in the last, last two cycles.
So right now, whatever we're actually paying on our property tax bill, it's because it's been adjusted, it's been adjusted, so there was no increase in revenue. It's what the people voted on. So it's the amount that the people voted on. The net revenue amount is what the people voted on. How much money the city is bringing in from the taxes is what the people voted on originally. Anyway, what I'm just, let me simplify. What I'm just trying to get at is, if these renewals pass and nothing else is done, next year, when we get our property tax bill, will it be higher or will it be the same as it is this year?
If the value of your property has increased over the last 10 years, then it will be higher. If the value of the property is the same, it will be neutral. And if the value of your property is less, it will be less. I'm with you. I agree with you. Everything you said, Stacy, Stacy, you happened to the point that you started talking about people voted on dollars. People don't vote on dollars. They vote on a millage rate. At the time they vote, the vote includes, and at today, today, this millage will generate this amount of money. But everybody knows, cost of lit, everything goes up, the price of everything. If anybody's tried to buy lumber in the last short period of time, you realize it's like up three times in nine months. So the reality is, this is funding used for a purpose. We did not say, let's increase the millage. We're asking the people to give the council the ability to levy up to the same amount as previous in the reassessment year, whether that's two or three years. If they decide to reduce it, they're welcome to. They're welcome, because that's their role. The role of the people is to give the max. The role of the council is to assess the portion of that that they wish to assess for property tax. So I, I'm, 99% of what you said, I totally agree with. When you got to the dollar amount, you and I disagree on that.
Well, I just, you know, in the beginning, when the millages were voted on, it was a certain amount of money that the city needed to operate. And based on that amount of money and home values, that's how we figured out how much the millage would be.
Not correct, because in the beginning, when the millages were voted on, that was still not enough money to operate the city. In the beginning, when the millages were voted on, there was sales tax that more than compensated for the expense. As an example, if we were voting on a millage that the fire department needed, it wouldn't be seven mills, it would be 24. So seven mills is a lot less than the fire department needs. So when we go out to the public, we're not saying this is enough to pay for this. We're simply saying, hey, guys, right now, this is what we'd like to do, because this is what we've been doing for the last, and it's more than 10 years. This is not just a 10-year millage. I can't remember how many previous times we have renewed each of these millages. So no, the decision is not made at that time that that's all the city needs, because the city needs way more than what these properties, millages are bringing in. The city has multiple funding sources. Funds come from sales tax, funds come from user fees, funds comes from millages, funds come from intergovernmental transfers, and funds come from grants. So what we're saying here is, of this mix, we would like to renew, we would like to give the council the ability to assess the same percentage, but the dollar amount is way less than what we need to operate those departments, way less.
Okay, you know what? I should have said what, not what the city needs, but what the city asked for back then. But can you just answer that one question? Not, okay, let's say.
So Ms. Stacy, Ms. Stacy, please wrap this up. This'll be your last.
Yes, sir. My last question, just clarifying of the same question I already asked. So whatever we paid this year in property taxes, this is not a reassessment year, so nothing should be adjusted. It doesn't matter what home values are, because it's not a reassessment year. Whatever we paid in taxes this year, will, if these renewals are approved, will our property tax bill next year be the same, or will it be higher?
Stacy, again, I have to continue to tell you it's going to depend. Because, for instance, if you built a house this year, your property tax is gonna be whatever you paid for that, regardless of what somebody for the similar house paid 10 years ago. This amount, let me say, okay, I don't know what your property, your personal property is assessed at, right? It's not a brand-new house. So let's say your house, and who's got these numbers? Liz, Lee, I'm not Lee, Chris, who's got the, if your house is worth X dollars, this is how much you pay. Can you do that for me, Liz, please? And then, Chris, I would like you to do the comparables of Kenner versus Jefferson Parish, if you don't mind. Liz, first. I think, I hope this answers your question, Stacy. This is what people will pay next year that's different than this year.
Okay, if your house is assessed at $250,000, minus the homestead exemption of $75,000, that puts you at $175,000. You take 10% of that, because that's how residential property is assessed, so we're at $17,500 times .001, which is a mill, times the millage rate. So for this example is, I believe, sewer. So that would be $19.95 a year, which is $1.66 a month.
Okay, so, so I think the answer is correct, Stacy. If your house is worth $250,000, nothing's changed, there's no reassessment, it's not a new house, everything's remaining the same, like you're talking about. Not the council's gonna roll back nothing, then you're gonna pay another $1.66 a month. Yes, that's correct. Chris, do you mind doing the comparison between Kenner and Jefferson Parish in terms of the millages?
Sure. You mentioned a moment ago about the fire comparison. In Jefferson Parish, residents pay 24 mills for operation of the East Bank Consolidated Fire Department. Kenner residents pay only seven, would renew it at 7.4 mills for fire protection. So Jefferson Parish is a little over three times more millage. The garbage would renew at 1.61 in Kenner, 1.61, compared to Jefferson Parish's four mills currently for garbage service. And the Kenner Sewer Millage would renew at only 1.14 mills compared to Jefferson Parish at five mills.
Okay, so I hope that's of some assistance. Stacy, I know what you want me to say. I want you, you want me to say, oh, yeah, we're raising your taxes, but we're really not. We're coming back at the very same level. Last year was the reassessment year, just like you suggested. There was no rollback. Last year was reassessed at exactly the same amount as the prior four. So there was no reduction last year. There was no rollback.
Thank you, Ms. Foshee. Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Thank you. Councilman Brannigan?
The only thing I wanna say is that, Ms. Alessandro, no one tells me what to do. Mayor Zahn and this administration and I have been on different sides of the fence, on different items. And I make my decisions myself, using a common sense approach. I think that Councilman Carol knows that we had voted on a piece of legislation to change something. I looked at it for six months, and I went back, and I changed it back and admitted that we need to have it back the way it was. That happened when I was council president. No one tells me what to do. So everybody out there, I hope you'll listen.
Mayor Zahn, you have the floor.
I agree with Councilman Brannigan. Do him and I have a great relationship? Yeah. I feel like I have that relationship with the council. Do I have private discussions with each and every councilperson, or my staff have private discussions with each and every councilperson? Are we accused of going out to lunch? Are we accused of having coffee together? Absolutely. Guilty as charged. There's nothing wrong with having a relationship, a working relationship with Councilman Brannigan, or each and every one of you all, to find out what y'all want, what we want, how we work together, how we find common goal. I mean, Councilman McKinney and I, probably the public thought that we disagreed on her resolution. It's not that we disagreed on her resolution, it's just that we didn't have a chance to talk about it after the council meeting. I mean, you know, we'll have a discussion that, let's, this is good, this is where we're going with that. So, you know, it's a little insulting when it's, and I think, George, you feel the same way as me, it's a little insulting that, you know, I tell George what to do, or George tells me what to do, or George and I agree, just like Mike and I, Greg and I, Brian, Glenn, Christie, Tom, any of you all, right? I just, I guess I'm saying the same thing Councilman Brannigan said, but it is insulting, and that's not what happens. It's called working together. You either have a political relationship, or you have a working relationship. I'd rather have working relationships with y'all, and I think that's what we have. If some constituents don't like that, I guess you're in the wrong city, because this is how this government's gonna work. A working relationship, not a political relationship.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Campo.
I see no other hands, Councilman.
No other hands?
No other hands.
I do not see any other hands here either, so motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, motion passes.